All right, at 5:30 PM, I'm going to call the meeting to order. If I could please have a roll call.
Commissioner Brewer. Commissioner McDaniel.
Here.
Commissioner McCowen.
Here.
Commissioner Jablonsky.
Here.
Commissioner Byrd.
Here.
Commissioner McClure.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith. Commissioner Kendall.
Here.
And Commissioner Parker. We have a call.
We don't have any consent items tonight, so moving to our non-consent items, starting with item number one, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-19, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36-201 of chapter 36 of the Code of the City of Norman, so as to remove lots 1 and 2 in block 7 of D.L. Larcha's first addition to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the CCFBC Center City Form-Based Code Urban Residential Frontage, and replace the same in CCPUD Center City Planned Unit Development and providing for the severability thereof, 201 West Apache Street. We'll start with the staff presentation.
Good evening. Anay Star with the Planning Department. And this is 201 West Apache. Here is the existing land use. They are requesting to rezone from Center City Form-Based Code to Center City Planned Unit Development. And here is the existing land use, which actually is on the corner of Santa Fe and West Apache, as you can see here, but actually is vacant right at the moment, which you can see in this aerial. And then let me just show you some pictures from the site. This is looking north from Apache towards the site. And then this is looking from the intersection of Santa Fe and West Apache, and looking back to the northwest towards the site. And then this is looking west down Apache Street. And then this is looking east towards the railroad tracks down Apache Street. And then here's from the subject tract, south towards the, looking south towards the structure across the way. And then here's looking from the alleyway back towards the structure on the south. Am I not coming through? Okay. No, that's good.
We're going to hold for technical difficulties.
I kind of think you have to eat that night. Okay, that's what I think. Okay, okay.
End resuming.
I was such a loud talker, I thought it was good. There we go. See, I thought you were pointing to the person behind me, sorry.
I'll ask that one.
Okay. All right. And here's a look down the alleyway behind the property, back towards the west. The proposal for this site is to construct a 16,000-square-foot, four-story mixed-use building with commercial and civic uses on the ground and residential in the upper stories. On this site plan, you can see that they are going to provide six tandem parking spaces at the rear of the structure, five on-street parking spots on Santa Fe, and two on Apache. And they are requesting to move the required build line along Santa Fe from the required five feet to move it to two feet closer, so it would be three feet instead of the required five. The different development standards are in the CCPUD narrative attached to your staff report, as well as they were listed under the staff analysis. I wanted to note that in my staff report, I did omit, I'm sorry to say, the allowance for grand opening signs. I said that it would meet all of the provisions of the Center City Form-Based Code sign section, but they are in fact actually asking for grand opening temporary signs. And then I would note that the Centennial Park at 411 West Sim Street is approximately four blocks from this property. And with that, I think I covered, yes, I covered all of it. I end up that, staff forwards this request for a Center City Planned Unit Development, ordinance 242519, to the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation to the City Council. With that, I can answer any questions. I will say that the applicant is here this evening and has a PowerPoint presentation as well, but I'd happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, and thank you for proactively identifying the proximity to the local park. Are there any questions by commission for staff?
I have a quick question about the landscaping. So by moving the build line, did I read correctly that they aren't able to put in trees and shrubs instead?
They'll be able to put in the street trees.
Okay.
Those are on the site plan. The open space requires so many trees per open, so many square feet of open space, and that, they are going to substitute and put it in front of the building instead of behind the building, and it will be shrubs instead of trees.
Okay, yeah.
So that is also shown on this site plan.
Thank you, I was confused about the street trees.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions by commission for staff?
Yes, just one quick question.
Sure.
On the parking, we had a previous application, maybe a week or two ago, that they had off-site parking, and this does not have that consideration. It looks like it's going to use street parking. Is that?
Right, and the other one didn't have the option to do street parking, they didn't have a way. But yes, on this one, it just strictly will be this on-street parking and the parking behind the building that they can guarantee that they can provide.
Yeah, the six spots behind.
Mm-hmm.
But the street parking is not going to be dedicated?
It is not dedicated, no.
Okay, thank you.
It is not designated for this site, and they can speak to that as well, the applicant.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions by commission for staff? Seeing none, I take the applicant presentation.
Do you know how to run this?
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, that advances it.
Good evening, all. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Star, for covering most of that. I'm just going to kind of skip through the things that she's already covered. This is in the urban residential section, there's the site, you've seen the site plan, basically I'm going to go over it real quick again. Two ground-floor commercial units, 18 bedrooms on three floors above. These are the summary of the exemptions. So the RBL, currently there is the property line right up against the sidewalk, that's the existing RBL, five feet behind the property line, we're proposing to put it three feet behind the property line. That's essentially so that we can get all of our ADA access in the residential units. We needed the extra two feet to be able to get it to work. Reason we thought this was an appropriate ask is because there's two properties just south of this one. Our property is in the top left, signified with that yellow triangle. These two properties actually show that those buildings extend over the RBL all the way to the property line, so we didn't feel like we were asking for something that wasn't already kind of a condition on this street. Allowance for extra uses, including restaurant, bar, lounge, tavern. Really, the idea is that the owner wants to put a coffee shop or a deli on the ground floor, and that wasn't allowed under Center City, so we're asking for those variances. Temporary signage, Anay's covered that. Exemption from the complete and discreet facade, the code requires it anytime you're over 75 feet, but as you can see in this scheme right here, really our effective length is 57 feet in the middle, and we've got 15 feet at each end for 87 feet, and so technically we're over that 75-foot max, but we feel like those two 15-foot sections on the end differentiate the facade from the rest of the building. And so we feel like in spirit, we qualify or comply with the complete and discreet facade requirement, just a little different. Landscaping, Ms. Star covered this. We're requesting a 10-foot clear height on the ground floor, and the reason for that is in order to do a single-run stair, the max height you can do on a single-run stair is 12 feet. And so in order for us to have to avoid from doing switchbacks, which would take up another five feet of corridor space, we just shrunk it down to a single-run stair. And so, but that made our first-floor clear height only be 10 feet. It's 12 feet to the second floor, but the bottom of the structure on the first floor is 10 feet. Allowance for those corner entries that we were talking about, and that's what those look like actually in perspective. You can see that while that middle section is 57 feet, we feel like the two end pieces really make a distinct facade, and so I feel like, again, we're complying with the spirit of that complete and discreet facade requirement. There's a more realistic rendering with some material shown onto it. You can see the ground-floor commercial, on-street parking, the street trees, the facade materials and everything like that. And this goes back to Commissioner McDaniel's comments about the parking. We are providing six spaces in the rear of the property, seven spaces on-street, and then we actually have an executed contract for seven spaces off-site. Those are within, it's for a total of 20 spaces, and those spaces are actually at the First Baptist Church parking lot within 700 feet of the property. First Baptist Church was really great about this agreement. The reason we didn't put it into the PUD is because it's contracted as shared parking, not reserved parking, so they wanted the ability to lease those spaces on OU football game days. So they are, our project spaces, 359 days of the year, but those six or seven OU football games, we gave them the ability to reserve those and rent those out on their own. Exemption from the street wall requirement, we're still providing a street wall, but instead of being at the RBL, it's at the property line. You can see that there, as the orange, the RBL is that dashed line, and we're just moving it three feet out to the sidewalk. That's where the street wall is in the rendering, and that's really the, that's the project. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We're really just kind of asking for a couple of exceptions to the rules here.
I have a question.
Yes.
So can you go back to the, where you had it all lined out? On the parking itself, so what, you have 18 bedrooms, so theoretically 18 different people can live here.
Yes.
On game days, what are these people supposed to do? And I know that we're trying to move away from everyone having their own vehicle, but the reality is, you know, they do.
Right, right.
So if you are having, in addition to not having, and I'm not a big proponent of parking, like, there is a lot of empty space used and not used at First Baptist Church. I'm thrilled to hear that that is the off-site location.
Thank you.
So just to be clear. But I'm curious, you know, I'm thinking if I were to live there, if someone I knew were to live there, if you were having commercial on the ground floor, deli, those parking spaces on the street may be taken, you know, by a customer using that. So realistically, how much of a concern is it that there's not, that there's really only six dedicated parking spaces on-site?
Right. So this obviously is going to be geared towards student housing, and the owner of the property has made the comment that these off-site spaces especially will be really for the kids that are from Dallas, you know, they park their car all week and they only get it to drive it back to Dallas on the weekends. And so they have a real great comfort level with it, they've leased other properties that have been underparked and have had no issue with it. To your comment about game days, I don't have a great answer for you on that. That's just going to be something that the owner and the client, they're going to have to navigate with their tenants. They seem to have a really good comfort level with it, so I think that they're going to be okay there.
I'm going to piggyback on that a little bit. I have, I do have a concern, because I actually drove by the property today. There were three trucks on your, on the property in question, on the backside of it, and there were additional four cars on the street. So it's currently being used today for parking, someone's parking there. So I'm, that's going to be, I think that's going to be a big issue for the project, especially with it having a commercial component down below. But I like the project, I love the look, love the feel, love what we're trying to do, but I just, I'm very concerned about the parking side of it, so.
Well, to that point, I mean, it's a legitimate concern. I think this client has really had eyes towards the future and the regional transit authority that's going to come online, so having a commuter rail that is literally a half a block from this property, they really think that they're going to be able to take advantage of that and make this a park once or park not at all kind of development, really focused on public transit, walkability, bike trails, ride shares and that kind of thing. And so the idea is to incentivize people to not have cars in this area.
Okay, and then what if that doesn't work? I mean, what's the other options that the owner would have?
There's, there's a lot of on-street parking in this area. We can only claim the seven spaces right near our property as, you know, in the count for our property, but there's still on-site parking everywhere.
Okay.
And if we needed to, you know, I'll go back to this First Baptist Church, you know, that property, they use that parking lot two hours a week. They use it Sunday mornings from 10 to 12, and the rest of the time it sits just like that. And so they have expressed the desire that if we needed more parking, they would increase our request. They see it as a revenue source, and they are very happy with us partnering with them, so they've.
Okay, and I appreciate, I appreciate you, you know, providing that additional information, because I think you're probably going to have to go back to them, so.
Sure.
But that's just my thoughts.
No, I understand, appreciate that.
I have a quick question. First, I think it looks like a great project.
Thank you.
I like that you're putting in some retail space. It adds a lot of walkability to the whole neighborhood, and I like the idea of, you know, people being able to shop where they live.
Yeah.
One thing I noticed, and this is just a curiosity, on the open space, it says you're going to have a rooftop deck.
Mm-hmm.
I was just curious, are you guys going to try and green that up and have some plants up there also to act as also a cooling effect on the?
I'm sure there'll be some planters up there with some green roof, just to, like you said, liven up the space a little bit, but they're not as part of the requirement.
Yeah.
We've met.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah. We feel like we met the landscaping requirement. Let me go back to the site plan real quick. You can see here, we got on the south and east sides, we have, you know, rows of landscaping all along the sidewalk, and then, yeah, five street trees, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think I could actually add a little bit of insight from that, from our Central Library project and the green roof. There were additional green roofs that were originally part of that project that ended up being scrapped, and in part, it was a million-dollar savings for one of those green roofs to be removed. They had kept the green roof over the children's area, but there was an overlook that you could see from like the break room, for example, and it was a large area, and they had to take that out for cost savings. So they are lovely, they do have a lot of benefits, but the fully green roofs can be very problematic and very expensive to install, but planters and things like that that can be more mobile, those ones can be a little bit more functional sometimes for smaller-scale projects at smaller costs.
Any other questions of the applicant by commission?
I appreciate your time.
All right. Are there any audience comments for this item? Seeing none, I would move to Planning Commission discussion.
Okay, there we go. Just to comment further on the parking, I've actually, so our family owns the building directly behind Scratch, which is two blocks directly north of this property, and we redeveloped that project, and as part of that, we had extensive discussions with First Baptist Church about leasing their spaces, because we do have commercial space for lease in addition to office space. And just to reaffirm or confirm the openness of First Baptist, they basically said that within their church membership, they don't even fill their parking lot on Sundays. Occasionally, when they do, it's when they have funerals during the day, and they're pretty flexible with how they arrange their parking on those days. But they are eager to have arrangements in place with adjacent property owners to lease parking, both in the parking lot that was shown, in addition to a parking lot that's directly across the street that's gated, that they have a little more of a premium with. So I think as long as that parking lot's not redeveloped, which I think as long as the church is there, it won't be, there's going to be a lot of options there in the event that on-street's not working, and they need to add more parking spots to the agreement that they have in place. So, you know, I feel that there's flexibility there, and I'm glad that First Baptist is open to putting those arrangements in place, because, you know, it will be necessary to make the project work.
I might have just one more question. Was there any type of business that they said that they would not lease to? Take, for instance, if it's a bar. I mean, are they against leasing to something like that?
I think it's going to be more about the occupancy load. I mean, you can only fit so many people in this space, they're 1,900 square feet each, and so a bar, I don't think you, I don't think you could get enough people to make a bar viable.
Okay, yeah, I just. I'm talking from the First Baptist side of things.
Oh, no, not from First Baptist, no.
Okay, excellent.
No, and just a little further to that point, the owner has made very clear, they don't want vent hoods, they don't want grease traps, they don't want any kind of very intensive kitchen use. So like I said, it would be cold-cut deli, coffee shop, very low-production kind of thing. And to Commissioner Brewer's comment, that parking contract that we do have in place is for 15 years, actually, so we feel like we've got a pretty good long runway on that. And they did say that we could, we could rent those spots on game day if we wanted to, so, appreciate.
And just to further answer that from my own experience, we did talk about specific use types in our commercial spaces, and effectively, they said that, you know, as long as they're good patrons, then they were okay with arrangement with any use type. Now, we didn't talk specifically about bars, and obviously this is a different property owner, different conversation, but they seemed pretty open to any sort of arrangement like that.
Any other Planning Commission discussion? All right. Seeing none, I would take a motion.
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
And a vote?
Commissioner Brewer.
Yes.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Yes.
Commissioner McCowen.
Yes.
Commissioner Jablonsky.
Yes.
Commissioner Byrd.
Yes.
Commissioner McClure.
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith.
Yes.
Commissioner Kendall.
Yes.
Okay, this motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving to our next items, number two, three, and four to be read together. Item number two, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution R-2425-82, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan, so as to remove part of the north half of the northwest corridor of Section 14 Township 9 North Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the very low residential and country residential designations and place the same in institutional designation. Item number three, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-25, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman amending section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman, so as to grant special use for the municipal use in the RE Residential Estates Dwelling District for the part of the north half of the northwest corridor of Section 14 Township 9 North Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, and providing for the severability thereof, 4020 East Tecumseh Road. Item number four, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2425-7, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by the City of Norman, Norman Utilities Authority, SBR Engineering Surveying Planning, for Norman groundwater facility for 28.2733 acres of property located at 4020 East Tecumseh Road. And I believe both our staff and applicant presentation might be combined on this one, so I would take that.
Hello, Justin Fish with the Planning Department. Go ahead. Okay, so we have an application for the property at 4020 East Tecumseh Road to amend their 2025 Norman Land Use and Transportation Plan designation. This parcel is currently designated as very low residential and country residential with the proposed change to institutional. So that's the current, is what they would change it to? The company's application is a special use rezoning. The special use is so that the applicant may construct a groundwater treatment facility on the property. This is the subject property. This is the existing land uses in the area. So they're looking to construct, again, a groundwater treatment facility. They are looking to put a condition on the special use that limits the special use to only drinking water treatment uses. Anything that's not in line with that would have to come back for an amendment to this special use. This is an aerial of the area. This is looking north from the property, looking south at the property, looking to the east, and to the west on East Tecumseh Road. That blurred-out spot on the image is a house. Here is the preliminary plat for the parcel. And this is the site development plan. So staff forward this request for special use for a public utility with condition of use with ordinance O-2425-25 to Planning Commission for consideration. Staff is available for comments, and the applicant is also available with a presentation.
Considering that our applicant is the city utilities, I'd be in favor, unless there's any other questions, for planning staff to go ahead and let them make their presentation.
Thank you very much, Commission, for hearing us tonight. This is something that the utilities department's been contemplating for over 10 years now, so we're happy to be here in front of you. So this facility, just giving you some context on why we're doing it, right now, we provide water from multiple sources. Our groundwater we send to town, it doesn't have a chlorine residual, so when regulatory bodies come and look at our water, they can't measure that in certain spots, so they said you've got to bring that up to current requirements. So this is something that's mandated by a regulatory body. As I mentioned, it's been about a decade we started considering this, the 2014 Strategic Water Supply Plan envisioned this, and we had this included for us to buy land in the 2015 rate vote. And then further, in the 2023 vote, we got additional funding to actually be able to build it after we acquired the land. We've met with property owners prior to coming to you guys and being in the pre-development meeting, 2023 in December, we met with them, heard their concerns, revised the plans. Fortunately, it took us about a year to get back to them, but we think we've addressed their concerns, and we're very happy with what we've got here tonight, so. So just to kind of give you an overview of the development here, so based on our discussions with the property owners, we've modified the layout of it to where north is to the left here. So the drive kind of meanders into the site, to our single building that we're constructing with this phase. What will happen there within that building is we'll have chemical storage tanks, it'll be liquid bleach and then liquid ammonium sulfate. We'll feed that on one side to a pipe that's routed around the building, and then we'll feed the liquid ammonia on the other side, that'll give us our disinfection, our chlorine residual, and then we send that water to town. No pumps at the site, we're using the existing pressure of the system. You can see the elevation changes there. Those are berms that we, based on discussions with the property owners, they were wanting us to screen the facility as much as possible, just to make them not be able to see it. So you can't see it on this one, and I'll show it on the next one. Sorry, let me jump to the building. Sorry, let me jump to the building layout. So this is showing what was inside the building. It's not a facility that we're planning to man at this time. So this is the initial phase of our development. In the future, as regulations get more strict, we might have to add treatment trains there. But right now, all we're doing is just a disinfection component, so just a lab for testing, restroom for staff. Waste water would be through an onsite disposal system. Since we're not going to have staff there all the time, it's just when they're coming to check on the facility. And then electrical IT room, and then the back of the house would be where we have our chemical storage. It's shown there in the bottom right, you can see, those are all in containment areas. So it's liquid, we'll have 110% storage capacity. So if a tank were to leak, or both tanks leak, we have enough storage there to contain that in that area, so it wouldn't be getting off the site. And so bleach essentially, which is sodium hypochlorite, and then liquid ammonium sulfate. So there on the front of the property, we were planning to keep it kind of in the country state. So we were going to do pipe rail fencing there along the front border there. We're going to bar-bar all around the 28 acres that's not there on the frontage on Tecumseh. But around the actual building and the site where the treatment's occurring, we're required by regulation to have chain link fence with three strand bar-bar. So that would be hidden back a ways, though. We will have a generator on the site, since this is something that's got to operate 24/7, that would be something we wouldn't run except in emergency situations and then weekly maintenance. And we've actually talked to the property owner to the west, who's going to be closest to us than the residents, and trying to time that we're not affecting them. So looking at the site from a longer-term perspective, you can see the south part of the property there is where we're showing would be additional treatment in the future. We had contemplated bringing that to you as part of this phase. We decided ultimately not to do that just because we'd be guessing. We don't know exactly what we're going to do there. Technology may change, and what we thought was going to be there may not be there. We thought we might come back to you as well. So we didn't want to present that to the property owners that way, or you guys that way. One thing that, when we showed the initial development to the property owners, they were concerned about the clear well that we're going to have on the site. And so that's a ground storage tank. It'd be about 40 foot tall to the top of the tank and then 10 foot for a roof. So we agreed that with them that we would bury that in the future when we build it, and that we would site it south of our current building line. So that's something that we agreed to with the property owners. One thing I didn't mention on the previous ones for detention, we're doing the LID, working with our stormwater quality folks to try to do the least impactful there. So we're going to do a rain garden where a lot of the water will infiltrate in. So we'll improve the water quality there. I think that covers here. So looking at the facility, what we're proposing, so masonry requirement, we're going to meet that with concrete block split face. Really just trying to make it more look like a shop if people do see it out there. Here's what we intend for it to look like with the berms. Lots of trees that we're proposing to plant there on the berms just to try to screen as much as we can. So hopefully it looks this good when we build it. And then when the trees start growing up, you even see less of it. That's our vision. This is just a more detailed graphic showing the rain garden we got there. Happy to answer any questions you might have regarding that. And then the planting on the berms, we're still working on, you know, additional landscaping that we're going to do at the entryway just so we can make it look more residential when people are pulling up there. We'd manually unlock the gate, and then we'd have a fobbed gate within the site. Lighting, just some pole lights that we would have out there, full cutoff in accordance with city requirements. We would also have some lights that were on the buildings, just at key points, doors where we're filling up our storage, chemical storage tanks. And at those locations where we will be filling our tanks, we'll have secondary containment at those connection points. And ran through that really fast, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Before we go too far, and I'm sure there will be other questions, but can you just briefly address groundwater versus wastewater, and that this is not a wastewater facility? Can you explain some of these differences?
Yes. So this is a location where we have existing groundwater wells in the northeast side of Norman. We're going to have it come to a centralized location because of the potential that we need to treat in the future. So it will be for drinking water treatment only, and that's why we also added that special condition or that requirement to our special use, that this will be for drinking water purposes only. So we won't be using it for any wastewater treatment, drinking water only.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant by commission?
I have a question. So if you extend, will it be for other types of water treatment? Or will it just be expanding on groundwater?
It would be expanding on groundwater.
So at no point it will be wastewater?
No, not with the requirement that we're putting in here. We would have to come back to you and ask for that permission. But no, we bought it with water money. Our plan is use it for water money. And that's what we told the property owners, or adjacent property owners as well.
Okay.
It looked like there was a house just right close to the proposed location. Sound, is there going to be a lot of sound, noise, anything like that?
It'll be very light, especially with this current phase, because tanks will be inside, and it's very small pumps. We're not docking huge amounts of water that we're boosting, it's just enough to feed into those lines. We talked about the generator and working with them on when that will run. And then we also met there out of the site with them and just worked with them on where we're at, and that we can preserve some of the existing trees that are on the east side of them, just to give them that screening.
And they were pretty, they were okay with?
Yeah, they would prefer it to stay afield, but yes.
I did attend the pre-development meeting, and there were quite a few neighbors at that meeting. It was very clear that they had already had communications with the city staff before that meeting, before I did visit with some of the neighbors after that, too. And they were very pleased with the willingness to work with it. For example, even though the tanks aren't on this site plan, they would actually come back for those underground tanks, that they were burying them so that you can't see them by height. And that they had made many of these promises. The wastewater question came up at pre-development, and it was very explicitly clearly stated that it wouldn't be done. The sound that he's talking about was a test that was going to run. An example of a time they proposed is like when the alarms would go off, or the tornado sirens, so that it wasn't any other impact. They would be willing to pick any time of day that the neighbors would appreciate for that. So even though it's a pretty moderate sound, even picking those. So I was very pleased. We talk about other applicants all the time and working with the neighbors. I really felt like the city utilities really did a good job of working with the neighbors on this project. And it was clear from attending that meeting that there was a lot of discussions that they had had, not just minimum discussions. So I wanted to add that comment.
Sir, are we doing questions or discussion?
Questions, or we can go to discussion if we are done with questions. Are there any other questions?
I just want to throw out there. Once the site is that, and yes, they'd have to come back to planning to get permission to add wastewater. And this is a concern. I know a lot of people that live in there, and that's why they were very glad to have the reassurance that like, yeah, they said it would never be there. But really having the clause that you would have to come back and ask, if you come back and ask devil's advocate, it would be on the basis of it's cheaper because we already have equipment, site, whatever, than finding a completely different site. So I don't know that it's as clear-cut and out of the question, even from your answer.
I understand. The other side is if we don't reserve that, then in the future, when we need to treat the groundwater, we are going to have to go buy another site. We do need to reserve that for that purpose. That's another aspect of it. That's the whole point of us buying it here rather than us doing, we had multiple executive sessions with council where we could have done, you know, maybe smaller treatment systems at the wells, but it had been incredibly inefficient. So we had consultants, yeah, we had consultants look at where can we buy land and put aside so that way we can maximize the amount of wells coming to it without having to, you know, do a bunch of repiping. So that's why we picked this location, because it was centralized. And not just doing disinfection in each well, thinking long-term, we need to have a spot to be able to treat it. And so there's not a lot of room to be able to do that and then wastewater in the future. So, and so I appreciate where you're coming from. And I understand there's probably, I can say that we won't do it there, but I don't know how else to lock it up other than that, so.
Okay.
Maybe I'll just say, so what I hear you saying is it'd be financially inefficient to try and mix it later, right? And so that's a protection for the future.
We need to reserve it for us to be able to do water treatment there.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I would move to any audience comments if there is any. And seeing none, I'd move to any other planning commission discussion.
I'll just make a quick comment. I appreciate the city being thoughtful about the landscaping and beautifying the area for the sake of the neighbors. And it's just nice to live in a beautiful city. So I appreciate those details.
The irony of adding the LID rain garden to improve groundwater at this facility was not lost on me and was appreciated. So just wanted to mention that also. And I appreciate the concern that Commissioner Kendall also brought up. We can never speak for what future commissioners would say whenever the item would be brought to them. But I feel confident within this group, for example, within this decision-making body, that we would make good decisions on the day with the information that we had at that time. And you never know what information would have potentially in the future. But like, uses are definitely things that we consider but are not a guarantee. And we've had plenty of good examples of that. So we've had neighbors that had similar concerns before that adjacent uses could be used, but that were not in these PUDs and not being asked of at that point. We can never stop an applicant from coming back and asking for that. But it doesn't mean that that next commission would approve that either. So just notes on that, I guess.
I think, I know, like I have trust in this commission. My concern is future commission and future council even, because we just make recommendations. And when the applicant is the city, I think that it just takes more conversation and transparency is very important.
If there's no other discussion, I would take a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
And a vote?
Commissioner Brewer?
Yes.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Yes.
Commissioner McCowen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jablonsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Byrd?
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kendall?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving to our next items, I'm going to read items number five and six together with one amendment to the agenda that the item has been requested to be postponed to the March 13th, 2025 meeting. The word "requested" being omitted, so with "requested." Item number five, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution R-2425-81, resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove part of the north half of the southeast quarter of Section 15 Township 9 North, Range 3 West of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the low-density residential designation and place the same in the office designation, 271036 Avenue Northwest. And item number six, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection or amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-24, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove part of the north half of the southeast quarter of Section 15 Township 9 North, Range 3 West to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the A2 Rural Agricultural District and place the same in the O1 Office Institutional District and providing for the separability thereof, 271036 Avenue Northwest. Again, these items have been requested to be postponed to the March 13th, 2025 meeting, March 13th, 2025. I would take a motion regarding this item.
I move for items five and six to be postponed to the March 13th, 2025 meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a vote?
Commissioner Brewer?
Yes.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Yes.
Commissioner McCowen?
Yes.
Commissioner Jablonsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Byrd?
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffith?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kendall?
Yes.
Side is postponed eight to zero.
Our next item on our agenda is planning commission training. We have some planning commission training item to address.
My name's Beth Muckulla. I'm with the city attorney's office. And training kind of sounds a little more ominous than it is. This is a refresher. It's long overdue. I mean to do it more often, and I thought that this was a good opportunity. I'm working it right for once. Good. Okay. I don't think this PowerPoint was sent out to you beforehand. Does that, okay. Whitney, would you mind sending it out after this? That's on me, because I didn't really have it finalized, so I figured it wasn't. I don't want to go through every single word on these slides. It's just a really helpful summary of a lot of things. I'll hit the high points. And if you see anything on there that you want to talk about tonight, I'm open for that. You can call me later, email, whatever, and we'll talk through anything that you see. But I wanted to start, you know, obviously where it begins, the charter is what frames our planning and zoning power, because we're a charter city. I have the language in there, but essentially, how the charter is set up is that we are empowered to zone, and the planning commission's a very important part of that. The charter sets up what the planning commission is made up of, how it's, you know, nominated and confirmed, all of those things. And then, of course, city council reserves the final decisional power. And that's actually set forth in our zoning ordinance, because the charter is what empowers the zoning ordinance. So here are your duties and powers. You get a notebook with this in it when you're appointed, so we don't have to go through all of this. But, you know, the high points are that first and foremost, you prepare plans for the systematic development. What are we doing right now? The AIM Comprehensive Plan, that's coming to you hopefully very soon. And that's the most important document for planning the city's future. And so your review and comments on that are incredibly important. And beyond that, there's a whole lot, a host of other items that you do. You recognize these, planned plaits, zoning maps, deannexations. We actually had one of these in the last few years that came through here. Not often, but it happens. So that's a list of what you should expect to see. Okay. I have kind of a random hodgepodge list up at the top of things that, you might recognize them, you might not, but believe it or not, these things are in the code as in your power. Now, some of them are looped into your staff reports, some of them aren't really brought ever. But there it is. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to talk about them more. But as far as what you're really doing, you have decisional authority and you have recommending authority. On most items, you are recommending, but you're decisional on short-form plaits. Short-form plaits, like certificates of survey, are the items that are going to appear on your consent agenda, because those are more administrative, less discretionary. But you're always free to take them off, you're always free to ask the questions and make sure that they really are meeting guidelines. But it's more a matter of making sure that it seems they've met the city's requirements. And that's what the city staff report informs you of. On certificates of survey, you're only recommending even though it is similar because it goes on for further approval. Hmm. Sorry, I've had a lot of allergy drainage. I promise. The, okay, another example of recommending authority are your zoning-related decisions. And those are, of course, very discretionary. Special uses, rezonings, land use, and of course, you have preliminary plaits that come along with a lot of that. Oh, I have that in there. Good. And then, of course, PUDs, SPUDs, CCPUDs, those are extremely discretionary and should be discussed a lot, and we do that here. Okay, so your subdivision review, just getting into the nuts and bolts of that, you see mostly preliminary plaits here. And something very important about it that we don't really talk about, but that in the last couple of years, staff has had to become very mindful of, is the fact that there are mandated thresholds before items can be brought. Sometimes projects are running behind, or some parts aren't moving as fast as others. And we have people say, hey, can we bring that plat separate, or can we do this, can we split them up? In a lot of cases, no, that's not going to be possible. And very specifically, for preliminary plaits, they must be brought simultaneously with that rezoning request. And of course, if you have a PUD, you really can't consider one without the other, right? When you have those two items coming together. Beyond that, there's actually requirements that those items cannot even be placed on the agenda, preliminary plaits, unless very specific things have been provided. Our code is very specific in chapter. Our code is very specific in Chapter 30. What has to be provided to staff before they are ready to actually come to you? That's how we ensure that you're looking at something that's ready to be voted on, that you actually have the information that you need. We have had some hiccups with this, because, you know, you might have, again, one part that's moving faster than the other, or, you know, maybe someone's just not getting their consultants to be as responsive as they want, but they don't want to be slowed down. We all understand these things. But the fact is, staff can't. We can't. We shouldn't be putting that on the agenda. And in a situation where we would overlook those rules or rush an item, that would be a situation that would open the city to liability from perhaps a protesting party who doesn't want that application to go forward. So that's the reason those rules are in place. And so we just find that these items are actually arising more. This discussion is arising more, so we wanted you to be aware that that, you know, that's out there. Okay, so as far as reviewing preliminary plaits, you recommend approval/disapproval. There is language about providing explanation for disapproval, so that's what would be provided in the notes of your discussion. And as far as... I'm getting lost in my own words here. Oh, right, this is confusing. You do have recommendations on the appeal of a disapproved amendment to a preliminary site plan. That's an administrative function, so if they don't get the administrative relief for that amendment set out in the code, that's something that could come to you. I don't know that I've ever seen one of these in the six years I've been here, but that's what I'm saying. There's all these hidden things in the rules that you might not be aware of. And then the last one is just how our EDCs tie into the plating process and how that's actually a part of the actual review. Okay, final plaits. You aren't really going to see these, and you know that. However, in the case that they're seeking a variation from the plating requirements, you might. Again, short-form plaits are another subdivision tool. You have approval power on that. And then certificates of survey, the last one, recommendatory. And then, again, another appeal from an administrative decision. If they don't get the lot line adjustment they want, an appeal could land here. Again, I don't think I've seen one happen. Okay. This is really where the basis of your authority comes from. You know, it was a federal case that really established cities their right to zoning, how they're allowed to do it. The Village of Euclid, that was single-use zoning, very structured zoning. That's what we have here, single-use zoning. It's a very common tool. So in that case, the U.S. Supreme Court upheld it on a federal level. States have enabling statutes that allow their cities to go ahead and do this. And in the case of charter cities like us, it's really our charter that says how we do it. Now, we end up in court, and people are going to try to fight that. But I say, as I stand here, we are a charter city, and that charter does control how we are supposed to be moving forward. One of the items we use for our zoning and planning is a comprehensive plan. As you're aware, we have the 2025 in place, and we're working on the next one. We've talked about the 2025 before. You can see the goals listed there. You've seen the amendments come through and what you should be considering for those amendments. AIM Norman is underway. Those are four goals listed there. It's probably a summary, but in AIM, I think the draft has 10 development principles. And I should be looking over here. I should be looking on my screen. I'm not used to this room yet. I'm very sorry. Okay, so with AIM Norman, we are anticipating that there might be a little bit more of a tie-in between the code and the land use plan. There's been a lot of discussion, nothing certain. But what we're evaluating right now is perhaps a zoning amendment that'll come through at the same time that will actually say in some of your other decisions that you'll be... If you're looking at a rezoning application, you get to consider the principles that are in that land use plan as one factor in your overall decision of whether or not it really fits the overall plan of the city. So that's to come. And then, of course, the last piece of the zoning authority is the zoning ordinance itself, which you are very, very familiar with. Okay, there are also some mandated thresholds for consideration when it comes to zoning. You're familiar with the pre-development meetings. That's the list of the items that will be going to pre-development. One item that goes to pre-development, but actually doesn't come here, it's when there's a by right use for a commercial communication tower. They are essentially going to pre-development as a notification to the surrounding neighbors, but our code does allow some of them by right. So you won't see them come here, but that's also subject to pre-development. Okay, and then another threshold is if you have something that has gone through and been ultimately denied, you know, there's a one year before they can come back, unless they're seeking rezoning to a different district or there's been a substantial change in condition in that neighborhood since the first time they were here. So this is how it works. We give 20 days' notice and 300-foot, 350-foot radius for rezoning applications. We actually notice before your meeting, so the letter that goes out and gives that 20 days is the 20 days before this. But as you know, it goes on to City Council, and they get a second public hearing on their application. And 350 feet, I think 50 feet more than the state statute requires. So we really do have a very inclusive notice process, even though I know we still have dissatisfied customers sometimes. So you review at a public hearing, and then you report your recommendation to the City Council on those zoning items. And so the standard of review for that is the police power. You know, we don't talk about it a lot in detail because they aren't factors. It's the health, safety, and welfare of your community. That is always what is on your mind when you're evaluating these applications. And I know you've heard these words, you can't be arbitrary and capricious, right? Those are the bad words. Don't be those things, because that's what the courts are going to look at if we are reviewed on that, on that decision. Okay, so with PUDs, SPUDs, and CCPUDs. I wanted to talk about these in particular, because we see a lot of them. Yeah, I'd say we see them pretty regularly. I want you to remember that those documents control. It's not uncommon to have applicants that get up here and say, this is our vision, or this is what we want. But if it's not in that PUD document, it is not written into the zoning. That's something that's very important to remember. So just whenever you're evaluating those items, if something is important and you can't find it in the document, that's a good question for staff. Of course, you want to read those documents, because they are all going to be different. We try to outline the differences in the staff report, and we definitely hit the highlights, but sometimes there might be something that we don't see in the same light that you would. And then, of course, staff questions. If you give us time, if you want to see more information, or if you think we left something out especially, if you give us time to gather that, we can provide that information to you at the meeting. Oftentimes, though, we're coming from another meeting here, and so it's unlikely that we're going to come with extra information or the ability to answer with information that's not in the room. Okay, so I'm trying to remember why I gave you this extremely long list here. Oh, right. Okay, so again, these are just other items. You're not necessarily going to see all of them, but you just need to remember your powers here. You know that with PUDs, you can base your approval on special conditions. We've seen some of that. It doesn't happen all the time. Your minutes that can have your discussion in them, we always send those forward, and of course, we record these, and so I know a lot of City Council members watch them in order to hear, like, the actual, the full comments. But if you want your actual decision to be based on a condition, it really needs to be a part of the motion. You need to make it very clear that that was what it was conditioned upon, and then that information can be sent very specifically on in other ways to the City Council. So I wanted to make that distinction. But again, and here, you're going to see some little things that probably never come before you, but are nonetheless listed in your zoning review. Okay, special uses. Special uses are written into the code chapters, as you know, and they're allowed to ask for them if they're already in the code chapter. So that means that the City Council has already reviewed and decided that under certain circumstances, these special uses are in the public interest to be in this. So what you're really evaluating, you're always thinking of the police power. But what you're really evaluating are more fine points within that. You want to look about conformance of this with the actual full context of the zoning ordinance. Look at a budding site. Are there unfavorable effects? Is there a way to make this more favorable with conditions or any other mechanism? So those are special uses. In fact, we were just talking about a special use with a condition, so good segue. All right, another random list. You have little zoning powers here and there. For instance, an administrative decision in Porta Quarter. An appeal would come here, whereas others would go to the BOA. Group housing projects. Not in the last six years have we ever had one of those, Jane? Yeah? Again, so there are things in there that oddly we don't see. Use determinations. This one... It's because when people have unique projects, they bring, they tend to bring PUDs and SPUDs. We don't have people utilizing these provisions. But technically, written into a lot of the little zoning categories are the ability for planning commission to evaluate whether a use is similar in character to others. Honestly, our lists have also been updated so much over the years that people find they probably don't need them. But, you know, little did you know, there are these kind of catch-all categories there. And we've gone over annexation, detachment, and all that. Okay, so just briefly, I wanted to talk about the items that come before you. A zoning law can be attacked many ways. A facial attack means it's a bad law. And so this really comes when we're bringing a zoning amendment through here. If you think that something seems vague or just equal protection, if you think it's singling out a protected class, age, disability, religion. Hopefully, it's gone through legal review before it got here, but honestly, you were the ones adopting, right? You're the ones recommending the adoption, so you want to be thinking about these things. If there's a question about the language that you think needs to be addressed, that's what we want you to do when we're standing up here presenting our ordinance. Okay, as applied attacks are when we get sued for a decision, right? So when you get to District Court, there is a strong deference to your decisions, which means that the record of your decision is going to be scrutinized, which means the things you say on the record are going to be scrutinized. So again, we need the... You want the conversation to follow the principles that the court is going to be looking at. You want to show this is how it's relating to the police power or not relating or not furthering the health, safety, morals, general welfare. In the appellate court, if it makes it that far, what the court is really going to look at is the District Court's decision. You know, the District Court is giving you deference, and if they think that it's not arbitrary or capricious, which is a really loose standard, then you're going to be fine. But the appellate court is actually going to make sure that the record is supported by facts, which, again, comes back to your comments about, you know, the reason that this is an appropriate use is because 100 feet down the road, there's this and that, you know? So those little facts in the record, making sure that your decision makes sense with the actual area that's being analyzed. Those things can be helpful to the record. Thought I broke it. Okay, very basic stuff here, but essentially, you're here because it's your duty to vote. We want your opinion on it. So in a case where you think you have a conflict, we'll talk through those. But without an actual conflict, we always encourage participation in votes. If you have a question about abstention, again, please give me a call. I've listed out the conflict cycle. That was in your notebooks. We don't have to go through that. I'm happy to answer any questions, and it's really a case-by-case thing anyway. And then, of course, you are here to apply, you know, local, state, and federal law. You're here to follow that. Those are your guideposts. Personal opinion isn't. Personal experience, knowledge, and background, absolutely. That's why you're appointed as commissioners in the first place. So, you know, we're looking for you to use your guidance from the knowledgeable perspective, as opposed to, you know, I don't like barbecue joints, so I think this is a bad idea. Okay, Open Meetings Act. There are all the basic rundown of it, but you're obviously very familiar. We give 24 hours' notice of the agenda, no less. We actually post it the Friday before. But if there's ever a little thing that needs to be changed, we can't go any less than 24 hours and still comply with the act. We have to make sure that the public can attend in person. This is not something we discuss much here, because we're very used to showing up. But every now and then, we get questions about, why can't we zoom in? You know, what about during COVID? There was an emergency in place in Oklahoma that allowed us to do video conferencing that was quickly repealed as soon as that emergency was over. So we're back to what I think is kind of an antiquated law that really doesn't allow a lot of options. If you wanted to video conference from your home, you would have to make your home available to the public to show up. So that's usually not a viable option. That's why we have our meetings here. What is a meeting? A meeting is not sitting next to each other at a basketball game, unless you're going to start talking about one of your applications, which I very much discourage. If it's quorum, of course. If you don't have a quorum, you can't have a meeting. So less than your five, you're fine. I do want to caution you. You've heard this before, social media. I just, I can't even name all of the platforms. I know that I don't know the names of all the platforms. So just be thinking about that, however they're structured. If an item that perceivably relates to your role here is being discussed, and five of you decide to comment on it, well, I don't like that. It makes me nervous. So try to be wary of, you know, where you're stepping into your role as a commissioner in those public social media interactions. And we all know, please don't reply all. You know, Whitney's going to be the new cop on the beat for that. You know, Renee did a great job, too. Okay, open records. What is a record? Obviously, it's everything that's put in front of you for your meetings. If you do have anything that relates to the applications that you consider, that could perceivably be a record, so you need to maintain those. You need to let the city know if there is a record that you're referencing during a meeting, because we really need to have that information and make it available. Again, we ask, you remember that you are applying the code here, and so you're going to have to own what you bring to the table. If you think that someone's personal blog could have, like, information that's helpful, you're going to want to, you know, be able to explain, you know, why they have the background and why they're speaking on a principle that relates to the police powers that you're informing. We try to provide you all of the information you need, and that's, again, why I encourage you to get in touch with us before the meeting if you want more information officially brought to you for the record, because we can do that for you. Okay, meeting procedure. We do have a little bit different of a procedure here than City Council. City Council has to follow Roberts rules. We actually adopted in the code that they follow Roberts rules. Technically, it doesn't say that about you all. And you do have a little bit of a modified Roberts rules procedure. That's fine. You know, we can talk about changing procedure if you ever wanted to, but the way it's done is fine, because we are voluntarily following it. And what we're really doing is just, we're instituting a parliamentary procedure so that it's efficiently run, it's transparent, and people know what's happening. So, of course, you get your staff presentation, opportunity for questions answered, and the applicant always gets their opportunity to speak. As for motion practice, we do keep it pretty simple. You know, we have postponements pretty regularly by request. If we don't specify a date certain, the reason that's bad is because it's the same as tabling something indefinitely. It just goes away. It's not set, or you have to renotice. So that can effectively kill an item, which is why we always try to be very specific. And you stated your motions tonight with the date in it. That's the right way, because it follows that rule. When it comes to debate, and again, we have more discussion in here, but the chair is in charge. Everyone knows that, and the commissioners are to be respectful. And the chair runs it. To the extent that the chair decides that they want to call on each person before they speak, that can be the way it's done. It really comes down to how the chair wants to run the meeting. At any point, anyone in the room can call a point of order if they think that procedure isn't being followed, or frankly, things are getting out of hand. So that's just, you know, things to think about, and we don't see it much here, so. Time limit is another tool. You've seen it. It's usually in advance, you know, when we have items that are coming that we know are going to have a lot of comments, and we try to institute rules in an orderly fashion. But frankly, the chair does have the power to call a time limit. A time limit can be requested by motion, as a matter of fact. And then there's dividing or severing the motion. I only bring this up, because, you know, we tend to consider items together here. We do have individual motions on them, but if you ever have a situation where you feel something needs to be divided, that's a tool that we could talk about using. Okay, so I just wanted to talk about my role up here, because sometimes I fear that I can honestly come off a little shady to you all. And that's because my clients... And that's because my client isn't, you know, you. It isn't you. It's you. And it's, you know, an officer or an official of the city that can make a decision on its behalf. It's the city manager. It's the city council as a body, but it's not one city council member, right? It's very confusing, for one thing. And it's also just, it's very touchy. So sometimes you'll see, it doesn't happen very often here, but you'll see, the attorney get asked a question about, "Well, won't that get us sued?" So if I answer that, and think about the answer, if I give a legal brief, that's exhibit A to the person who decides to sue us. So I have to be very careful about protecting the interests of the city when I'm answering questions, and that can make me look kind of cagey sometimes, which is why, if you think you have a question that's digging deep into something, please give me a call before the meeting. I'm happy to talk through it, and I'm happy to bring specific legal citation if you feel that you want that to be part of the record. It's something we've done before. It's not unusual, so feel free to do that. But please don't think I'm being shady. I am just trying to protect my client, which just isn't you individually. Okay, what about the applicant's attorneys? They're all very nice people, okay? These guys are nice. I like them. They're professional, these women and men. But they have a client, and it's not you on any level. It's the person that they came to bring the application for, and I know you know this. I know that, to use my kids' words, they're all a little sus, right? And we all see that. So feel free to ask me the question you ask them if you think you might get a different answer. I'm not going to be shy about it. I will give you the information you want if you ask for it. But I don't interrupt meetings. I'm not here to make an argument against or an argument behalf. I'm here to tell you what the law is, what the facts are that I see that might be relevant to that, and what you should be considering going forward. So that might seem confusing, because attorneys are usually advocates, but again, I'm in a really precarious position that doesn't make me quite as jump up and make the argument as you might be expecting. So feel free to prompt me to talk. I'm not shy about it. Hmm. Oh, that was it. So was there anything weird in here that you saw that you want to follow up on? Any questions? It's boring stuff. I'm sorry it was at the end of the meeting, too. I should have got you, you know?
I do have one question. It's something we've discussed in miscellaneous discussion in past meetings, but as far as making recommendations or conditions to an application that we pass along, oftentimes there's discussion that we have, and someone, you know, one of the commissioners may say, "This seems like this would be a good idea to do," or, you know, "Maybe you can improve the project like this." And then we make it to a motion, and that recommendation is not in the motion, therefore it's not a condition of our approval or recommending approval. What is, I don't really know what my question is, other than like, I'm curious how we can do a better job of passing along a condition that we've discussed as part of that. Is that really something that needs to be in the motion? Or is that, or are, and I know that council can come back and watch the meeting, or read the minutes, and they may, you know, be swayed by this or that with recommendations of individuals, but ultimately, we need to come to a consensus with our motion that we're moving forward. And then a follow-up to that is, in the event that, let's say, three different commissioners make the same recommendation, but one of us moves forward a motion to approve, but that recommendation didn't make it in the motion, how do we go about pulling back that motion to make sure that recommendation is included as part of the condition?
Wow, okay, that was a lot.
Or competing motions? How would you have competing motions?
Well, you wouldn't want to have competing motions.
Don't you have to vote on the one? Don't you have to vote on the one that's on the floor, or the person that made it ask to retract it?
Mm-hmm. Or it can be amended on the floor as well, to add the condition. But you wouldn't want to have competing motions, for sure. Yeah, you would want either the first one withdrawn, or you would want the second person to propose the amendment. And, you know, if the condition isn't in the favor of the full body, then the condition won't be added, and the motion will go forward without it. But to answer the first part of your question, yes, I mean, so there's a lot of discussion here, and I know that it's all very valuable, especially to the city council members who specifically go back to watch the meetings, right? So they're going to hear all of it. So it might mean that, to them, there's not a huge distinction between whether it's in the motion, or if it was said. But technically, to be the statement of this body, it has to be voted on by the body, which is why, to actually be a condition of Planning Commission's approval, or recommended approval, it would need to be voted on as part of it.
So within that, you said amending a motion. I don't think we've ever amended a motion, as far as I know. So I'm curious about what, okay?
Could you just walk through an example of what that procedure would look like? If we had a motion and then wanted to amend said motion with a condition?
It is a little trickier here, because you actually do your motions differently than city council. You know, they set out their motion at the beginning, and then they invite the people up to talk. And once they've done that talking, then they might discuss the amendments, or, you know, what they want to do with it. You know, that doesn't happen on applications as much as it happens on maybe the legislation, the ordinances that are being considered, but that's how you would see it done. Here, we announce the item, but a motion isn't made until the end, and no judgment. Often, motion to approve. That's all that's said, and it's really quick, and it's fast, and we kind of move on really fast. One option might be slowing down and making deliberate motions, "I move to approve." But honestly, you're going to probably want to be testing those conditions during your discussion, right? While you're discussing everything, saying, "I think this would be a good condition." And then you would have to rely on your fellow commissioners to follow up on their opinion of the condition that you've suggested. You know, and that's what gives you a good idea of whether or not that is a motion you want to take up, whether it might have support or not. But it would involve you all being, you know, clued in during the discussion period, which you're thinking about a lot of things during the discussion period. So it can be very tricky. But I think the first rule would be formalizing the motions that are made a little bit more, slowing that part down, and it might give people more time to think, even before it's seconded, you know?
If we did want to amend a motion, would it theoretically work as, make a motion to approve? Before it was seconded, somebody would make a motion to amend? Tell me functionally what that would, maybe that process might look like as an example.
I think we did a point of order when we did it before. There was a really quick motion and second, and then there was a very quick point of order. Is that motion including what we've discussed as a condition or not? And then you directed the motion to be corrected and reseconded, and then we voted.
So, I want to make sure I understand the rules of order. So what happens after a motion is seconded? There should technically be discussion, and that's the time that you can put the kibosh on things. And you can, for example, first, it has to be discussed, and someone can offer a friendly amendment. And, correct me if I'm wrong, the way a friendly amendment works is, the person who moved in the second can accept the friendly amendment or not?
Yes.
And if they choose or not, and in the discussion, it seems like people want to have the amendment, then we would have to vote down the motion, and then we could make a second motion with a condition. Does that sound like good order?
Yes, that would work.
So if it would behoove the commission, it would be very easy for me to add in, just after we have a motion and a second, if there's any other discussion. So I can do that on chair to help with that point.
And remember, special conditions are very particular to the P U D, the S P U D items, and also to special uses. So that might also be something that you kind of flag and keep in the back of your head, and, you know, use the magic words. "I would like us to consider special conditions on this one." Just like, put it out there. I think it just takes, you know, just including it in the communications. I don't think you need to change your order to match the city council to do anything like that. I think it just takes being aware of it, talking about it a little bit more, and putting it out front, so that it can be communicated more clearly. Because I do hear a lot of discussion where it sounds like someone might like to do that, but it doesn't really go further, because maybe the discussion isn't a direct response to that from the other commissioners, always.
So just as a reminder, the, in talking about the motions, talking about the discussion before the motion is made, whether the conditions are part of that motion. So the minutes that move forward, they're not verbatim minutes? Okay. And so when you do have, I mean, you guys have great discussion, but unless council comes back and watches the meeting, they're not reading, but they're not getting your comments. So I think it would be, yeah, good to have that additional time to, you know, have an opportunity to decide if you wanted to add those as part of the.
I think we even, in the past, have we added it to the resolution where it says Planning Commission approved it with special condition of? I think we've done that to memorialize it further, so.
Yeah, it's part of the motion, but just as far as the minutes are concerned, that it's not in there.
Right.
The general discussion's not in there.
Honestly, I mean, there's just not one perfect way to do it. That's why parliamentary procedure has a big, huge book attached to it, and I am not advocating that we become experts on that. But there's always a way to slow things down and work through it in the moment, if that's what you really want. So don't be shy about saying, "Hey, how would we do this?"
There's good discussion on this, and I think we've got good consensus of something that's a very easy addition into our process that could add a little extra point for that, and appreciate the additional training on there. Also, I had a miscellaneous comment, but it's in relation, so thank you again. I'm very honored to have been elected as your chair again. Very grateful for the opportunity. I appreciate it. If there are any other ways that you would like the procedures to change compared to how they have historically, I'm very open to that. Generally speaking, we went a little out of order with questions and discussion. I have historically favored communication, so not necessarily going in order and having one chance to speak. Maybe somebody will say something, and you have something else to say. And I'm encouraging of more communication rather than less with that. But if there's ever a request for a more formalized process to that, or any other changes, you're welcome to bring that up now, or separately, anytime. So, thank you.
Can we get a clock? Time clock? So that way you don't have to sit there and worry about the time. You can listen.
Yeah, the only, I do time pub. I still time public comment historically. That's another example of a procedure that we've been consistent about, and I think consistent has a good value for what audience members can expect. It's consistent every time, regardless of how many people show up. But I usually just use a timer on my phone for that, so.
I do have a request. When we have a hot item, and we have a lot of people who are in support or against, you know, there's been discussion before about how an attorney will be given an hour, or an hour and a half to speak, and then individuals get three minutes. We've said that they can pool their time together as a group, so you could have 10 people pool their three minutes into 30 minutes. This was an issue when we had some economists in the city who wanted to rebut statements that lawyers were making, and they said, "Three minutes is not enough time." But if we can announce this when there are large groups to remind opposition groups that they can pool that time, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. And Beth, maybe, can address some examples of times where we have given, in public comment, longer time periods. I can just speak from my experience, but you can probably speak directly about that, too.
You know, honestly, it's really hard. I know that the justification for that is always based on the fact that if they are representing multiple parties, and likely, an attorney is in a situation where they're representing one protester, right? There's probably a few. Then it makes sense to have a consolidated presentation by their attorney, rather than have each of them get up there individually. I don't know that I've seen anyone have their attorney get up and then still get up and talk after them, but it's a really hard thing to enforce, honestly, in the moment. So it is kind of an honor system, no matter what you do. But allowing them more time, you know, and it might be good to explain it in the moment. It's based on the fact that they're representing multiple people with interests, and presumably, that's going to make the meeting run more efficiently.
So things that you may not know that happen, usually when those have happened, when we've had people, they have actually made requests in advance to planning. The attorneys have notified them that they are representing a group of people. We did have one H O A with the Eagle Cliff, so there's a specific example, and it was an H O A representing many people. They reached out and asked, and the planning staff reached out to me to ask if I would allow that. And I said, "Yes," but it was with the intent of communicating with them not to double-dip and have twice as much time to speak by having a representative for all of them, and then also getting up to separately speak to. So I have been generally pretty accommodating about that, but generally, those people have specifically asked for those, and they were representing larger groups of people in a, generally, a professional capacity, too, even with the H O A president, too. So it does, I don't know that I would limit it to having to be an attorney, per se, but generally, it's in a professional capacity, not just necessarily a group of neighbors, or, I don't know, that would kind of come up with.
And I will say, when staff gets wind of it in advance, someone saying, "How is it that I can get a few more minutes? I have these clients, I have this presentation." We encourage them to ask specifically what we want, so that we can relate it to the chair beforehand. But I have seen it where, honestly, you just expect a huge group to show up, and you announce at the outset that, you know, attorneys representing multiple clients, or, you know, representatives of a large group, such as an H O A, that they all try to speak as a group and avoid the, you know, the individual comments, and then, you know, the groups will be given 10 minutes, and the individuals three. I've seen that. Again, it's hard to enforce, but it can be done either way, but it's best done with advance, so that, you know, you can enforce it.
And similarly, to the economists and that one that I think you're referring to, they can always submit additional information for us to consider. We had economic reports that were included. We had a PFAS report in that specific example, and I read it. And so there's no time limit as far as materials that are submitted in advance to, separate from speaking to.
And I'm sorry, if I could just take it off of the subject, but related to something Commissioner Burgess said. If you have an applicant that is in touch before, or that sends you something, you know, I'm not saying that you're sitting down at a table talking to them or anything, but if they send you something that isn't in the packet, please do provide that to us. That is the perfect example of an item that needs to be available to the public at large, if you're getting something directly like that. Probably not very often, but it can happen. Sometimes also, your emailed protests, especially if you want to discuss those or read them into the record, please provide us a copy of something like that.
I don't know if we necessarily exactly addressed it. I don't know if that is necessarily satisfying, but maybe if there's a specific solution as to what that would look like that would be different, I'm open to considering that, or kind of discussing it further, too, either on air or off, so.
Thank you.
I will say, I mean, can it be established by a formal rule that you put in place for those items? They're hard to predict, so, you know, it's a lot to think about. But often, they're a decision of the chair in the moment, because the chair moderates
Good comment. Any other questions, or things that came up from discussion? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're moving to miscellaneous comments for, are there any miscellaneous comments by staff? Any, any other you can do?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to, Laura may have to jump up here and tell me where I took a picture. Forgot my notes tonight. But I just wanted to remind everyone that, so last night, we had AIM steering committee So March 11th, at the city council pre-conference, we'll have the land use plan and the housing master plan. This is what I was, sorry. April 9th, is this still correct? April 9th, we will have the Planning Commission slash City Council joint meeting. Is that correct still, Laura? That's what was on the PowerPoint last night. Okay. So I just wanted you guys to have that on your calendar, and of course, we'll send you reminders and get meeting information out to you, but. Yes. Yeah, there'll be two meetings that week.
And what time is that? Do we know?
We don't know yet, but I suspect it'll be 5:30. But we'll let you know. Get you guys an email, meeting request out, as soon as we. soon as we can, but April 9th is what I have right now.
Any other miscellaneous discussion by staff? Any other miscellaneous discussion by commission?
I know we've discussed this in the past and I think we had some discussions about safety and other things. Is this where we're going to have meetings moving forward?
I believe that to be correct.
Okay. I did have, I know this is kind of a work in progress, but one suggestion, I know this will take some investment in time to figure out, but I did, I, I've always liked the vote, like automatic vote that shows on the screen. We're all people and kind of swayed and, you know, biased and things. And so going down the row, it, I feel like it, it adds a little bit of bias.
Is this because you start the roll call? Is this, is this what this is about?
I don't know. But anyway, if that's something to be.
I felt no peer pressure, just, just to be clear.
Yeah, that's just something that if it could be looked into.
Have you considered moving to a different ward?
Considering changing my name to R or something like that over there, so.
Thank you.
And can we have a TV right there, please? So we, I'm just, if.
You know, I seriously, I mean, this is like, Commissioner Burgess, this is a work in progress and we are still getting the, the system set up. But I mean, that might not be a bad idea. We'll, we'll just have to see what we can get because it is hard. I mean, I know, I found myself going from, right, which screen to which screen.
We were staring at each other right now. Uncomfortable.
And I was taking turns. I didn't want to give too much favoritism to one side.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could not see through a lot of you.
That's the thing, I've only seen the top half of the screen.
Your point at career tech meetings, we have three TVs in front of a cardboard, a bamboo cardboard, maybe, so I mean, one, well, I think it would be so a whole lot easier for.
Yeah.
Well, if there's one in the middle, it's not going to help you.
Well, they'll be, well, maybe they'll be, be better, I think.
Yes, it will be, maybe less, less of a B or less of a C.
You never get it unless you ask.
No, I, I mean, I'm happy to, you know, to find out what I can and see what, what are.
And I think we will put a record that I think the consensus is commission does prefer city council chambers when available. So that is definitely a preferred space that we prefer to meet in when we can.
Yeah, and is there security here or anything?
I don't know that we want to put that exactly on public record.
No, no, I'm asking. Oh, well, yeah.
We can, yeah, we can continue to discuss this stuff.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Well, just like.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Well, just like.
Yeah.
Well, just like.
Yeah.
Well, just like.
Well, yeah.
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 Well, yeah.